Okay. Good morning. I'm going to call to order this work session on November 1st, 2022. Hope everybody had a wonderful Halloween Eve. So with that, we will start with roll call. Mr. Druer.
Ms. Larimer.
Here.
Dr. Refort.
Here.
Mr. Pullman.
Here.
Mr. Bennington.
Here.
Mrs. Eubank.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In our safety briefing, Perry'sburg Schools welcomes you to the Commodore Building, and we thank you for attending this morning's Board of Education meeting. We care about the safety of our students, staff, families, and guests. Please note that there are exits on both sides of the east and west sides of the cafeteria. In case of an emergency, an AED is located just outside the cafeteria doors. You're located at 140 East Indiana Avenue. Thank you for joining us and supporting Perry'sburg Schools. Next item, can I have a motion to adopt the proposed agenda?
Go move.
Mr. Pullman.
Second.
Dr. Refort. And roll call, please.
Mr. Pullman.
Yes.
Dr. Refort.
Yes.
Ms. Larimer.
Yes.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes. Okay. With the proposed agenda, we -- Mr. Druer, you have the show today with a special treasures report, so let you set up a -- by all means, lead us.
Happy Tuesday, right? It's November already.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. All right. So, as you know, twice a year, we need to have this conversation, provide a forecast for the current year and the next four years, and by law. So what I want to do today is spend quite a bit of detail going through the forecast, line by line, sharing some detail mainly about the assumptions, because the assumptions drive the numbers. It's not the other way around. So it's important that you have that, because in the end, it's not my forecast, it's our forecast, right? It's the district's forecast. The other thing is, this is the first run-through, so my plan is, you see it today, hopefully I get some feedback from you. Finance committee will see it here, you know, week and a half or so, and then comes back to the board. For the regular board meeting, the presentation will not be this long. I mean, I'll share some tweaks to it, but we'll move on. Of course, you may have some questions by then, too. So, nothing wrong with a little humor to start the day off. It's not quite a crystal ball, but obviously, the farther you look out, you know, how accurate do you expect the forecast to be? We're in the -- at the end of the second year of biennial budget, we know what to expect from the state, but we don't know what to expect in the next biennial, right? You know, Tom and I are working on some things, trying to shape that in our own ways, but it's political. And who knows, you know, we don't know for sure what's going to happen. I think we have some -- a nice, you know, range of what things are going to happen, but we don't know for sure. Before we get into the forecast numbers, I always like to remind ourselves why we're here, and this is the same information that Mr. Schwartz-Miller shares on our performance. This chart shows a performance index versus spending per student. The vertical line is spending per student, and the horizontal line is performance index. And this first chart is -- I can't remember which chart this is. These are the Wood County and Lucas County schools. So as you can see, performance index is up there. Otto Hills is only with a higher performance index, and our spending per pupil is less than average. And of course, really, like compared to our peers across the state, similar size, the Brexvilles, the Solins, the Avons, and again, you know, higher than our peer average in performance and lower on the expense side. So it just kind of gives us -- remind us why we're here. We're not here to count beans, we're here to educate students in the most effective way we can. Oops, wrong way. All right. Just a reminder why five-year forecast, it's in law, this is required by every school district. You know, the number-one reason, obviously, is to have this conversation. That's why we do this. It's not the treasurer sitting in their little tower, cranking out the numbers, that it is a -- I don't know why it has to be forced, but in some case, it forces us to have a conversation with the board, the community, about our finances in long term. I don't necessarily consider five years long term, but things can change that quickly. It's the basis for our 412 certificate. This is practical. When we sign a contract, we have to say that we have the money to pay out the contract. That's that 412 certificate. And the last one is, ODE and the state use it, the five-year forecast to identify school districts at risk. So a couple things. This forecast is a snapshot as of today, and literally, I tweak on it all the time, and there's a lot of changes that are immaterial, but it's always changed. We've got new information, spending trends, costs of things, that kind of stuff. What I want to spend time today is talking about a particular set of assumptions that go behind it, because that's the important thing, is what am I assuming, and do you buy into those same assumptions? And then reminder, you know, state budgets are on biennial basis, and this is -- it's always a work in progress. So lots of resources out there for people who want more information on it. You can go in to the state, to ODE's website, and look at five-year forecasts at any district in the state of Ohio, as well as their assumptions. And so after the board approves this forecast, it gets uploaded, it's there for everyone's perusal. Okay, there it is. So good luck reading that, right? That's just for -- that's for comic relief also, by the way. Okay. So let me start -- I like to start -- people always want to know, you know, are we okay? You know, do we have money? Before they want to hear about everything else is, where do we stand financially? So this is the bottom part of the chart. The first -- the first line on this is line 6.0, which is our relative spending for the year. So it's our -- so in fiscal year 2023, we're -- right now, this forecast has us end of the year positive spending at $130,000. If you recall, the May forecast, I had us negative at 370. Now talk about why that almost $500,000 swing. That's, you know, obviously, that's a good thing. We, you know, Tom and I worked on, how do we get to -- we don't want a deficit spend, right? It's somewhat of nature of the beast in Ohio schools, the way the funding works on new levies and that kind of thing, but how do we do that? But you can see going out, next year, negative 2 million, and then the last three years are kind of very, very scary numbers, but they reflect the levy, the five-year that was approved in 2019, they reflect it going away. Okay? And so above the line, you forecast, you don't have the levy, but you'll see down here at the bottom, I add it back in. So there's an assumption that if you renewed that levy in this final format, that what things would look like. So we'd still end up in, you know, in a negative situation, just not as bad, obviously. So that's -- that kind of sets the stage. Now, again, five years out, who can predict exactly what's going to happen at this point? Okay. So let's start, again, this is the same chart, same information, just graphically. Black is revenue, gray is expenses, and that pink or salmon color, that's the levy that falls off. So you can see the impact of that levy over those last three years of the forecast. And then the yellow line is our cash balance. And obviously, we can't end up at negative cash balance, $18 million. The state would never allow it. Of course, we would not -- we're not growing money, right? It has to -- we can't end up there anyway. All right. This is an estimate, we're closing October now, so this number will change a little bit by board meeting time, but so you can see, we're still in good shape cash-wise at this point. I just want to point out again, on the forecast, the cash balance it forecasts is this down here in June. So while the balance at the end of June looks good, that's not our low point of the year, right? So if you look at 2025, we're good, but we're probably going to struggle toward the, you know, January, February, depending on cash flow. So just -- so the end of year is important, but recognize that's not our low point in the year. Okay. So let's spend -- let's get into the nuts and bolts. Slow me down here, we get going too fast. So here we are on revenue, I've highlighted fiscal year 2023, and you see, you know, revenue growth for next year, and then revenue falls off again. Revenue is going to fall off because of the levy that we need to renew. So up on top, I'm not assuming the levy is renewed. That's a decision that we'll have to make in the next year. The earliest you could be on the ballot with this is 2023 to renew it, but you put it 2024 in November, you'd have to pass it then, or pass a levy then, or you'd lose a year of revenue. Okay. So let's talk about -- so our biggest source of revenue is local property taxes, and that was represented here, and you see -- you can see the growth over the years, and the orange on this is that levy. And you can see over the percentage changes, we've got this incremental levy that increases a million and a half a year, which is great, but as a percentage of overall revenue, that million and a half is a fixed amount, so as a percentage, it's going to drop. And we'll get into a little bit more on the drivers on this. And this is -- so our property tax revenue, and if I -- you've hopefully heard this a number of times, it's driven by what? Really, the main thing is our tax rates and property values. So this blue, this light blue is our -- is -- oops, oh, I must have -- how did I hit the button? There we go. So you can see our property taxes going up, but what happens, this reminder, is that there's two sets of millage that we deal with. There's inside and outside. The inside is like 4.3 mils, that's fixed. That was set by the county years ago, by the Ohio Constitution. Each county has 10 mils, they divide it up wherever they want, school districts get a portion of that, and we get 4.3% or so, 4.3 mils. That's fixed. As property values go up, we get more revenue, because that does not change. Above that's the voted millage. The voted millage, then, when you vote in a millage, you're not voting in a millage, which you're voting is a tax collection. So if taxpayers approve a tax levy, let's say for $3 million, that levy can only generate 3 million on existing properties. Now, if you add, as you add new properties, that can go up, but on existing properties, you don't generate 3 million. So as property values go up, that effective millage drops in order to keep that same 3 million collection, right? So the easy one to look at is our PI levy. Our PI levy generates about 1.7 million. When it was passed, it was a 2 mil. Today, it's like 1.7, 1.6. So over the years, the effective millage drops. That happens until you hit the magical 20-mil floor. And at the 20-mil floor, then, we do see benefit from valuations going up, because at that point, the effective millage cannot drop any lower. By state law, that 20 mils is low as it goes. And that's permanent millage. So what you do as a district many times is, if you need additional, you pass emergency levies, which don't count against that 20-mil floor. So our current levy that we need to renew, that doesn't count against the floor. So it's like 13 -- about 12 mils right now. It doesn't count against that 20 mils on the floor. So if you look at it, I'll pull up a chart next time, I'll bring it. It shows you how far our effective millage has dropped. Let's say you have, we have 70 mils that voted, and effective millage is, let's say, is like, you know, 2025, something like that. So we're at the 20-mil floor, which is good, and it generates additional revenue as tax values go up, but we're at the 20-mil floor. Okay? So that -- does that answer the question?
Yeah, it's helping. Thank you.
So our real estate values are going up, and this is -- our taxes have risen primarily since 2019 because of the incremental levy. That's where you see the big jump. So a couple assumptions. Obviously, we have to fix some incremental levy through 2024. We're at the 20-mil floor, so increased valuations do give us some additional revenue. The key assumptions, and there's two big ones here, is that our annual new construction, this is, I'm talking primarily about residential. Agriculture values are dropping, we don't have that much anyway, it's almost insignificant. Commercial, what I'm seeing is, it's about a wash, because what happens is, we're getting some new commercial construction, but commercial proprietors are very more aggressive about refining their valuations, so that drops. So the bulk of it is residential. Based on trends, I expect us to, this next year, about 13.5 million in new construction, and that's 1%, 1.3% of the base. 13 million sounds like a lot, but it doesn't shift the needle when you're over a billion dollars in valuation. And, you know, and I'll talk about the little -- you know, the question is, what's going to happen with the market with interest rates they are? And the conversation I've had this past week is, right now, I don't see, we're not seeing any slowdown. So, you know, what we're seeing across other parts of the country with residential sales slowdown and construction, it hasn't hit here yet, if it will. The big, and this number, I think, is going to change before my final review, the big question is, next year, Wood County is up for a reappraisal year. That's where the county auditor, in theory, now, I assume that Matt will do this, they go out and touch every property, they go and look at every property in the county, and they do a reappraisal. I have a 10% valuation increase built into the forecast. This year, those reappraisal counties are coming back to 20% to 30% increases. Why is that important? That, whether it's 10% or 20%, does not impact us this fiscal year, but it will impact us next fiscal year and beyond, for the question Sue asked about being at the 20-mil floor. If reappraisal goes up 20%, we'll -- because we're at the 20-mil floor, we'll see more tax revenue, significantly more. So I'm playing with where do I need to be with that number? 10% is where we've been traditionally average, but, and of course, and this year, across the state, it's much, much higher, but then we've got the economic pressures on interest rates and stuff. So I'm trying to figure out where that sweet spot is, because this not only impacts our property tax revenue, it impacts our state share also. So it's -- it impacts us both. So trying to find the right level of conservatism there, not to sandbag, but to be realistic, is kind of what I'm playing with. 10% is probably not right, it's going to probably be higher than that, but that really doesn't impact this year, though. I just want to make sure that people understand it, it'll impact future years. And of course, this is a big deal, because our local property tax is 59% of our total revenue. Second piece of this is public utility. That's pipeline, substations, power lines, those kinds of things. And again, you see the impact in orange on here of that levy. If the levy is not renewed, or we don't replace it, that revenue goes away. Public utility, personal properties are fastest-growing source of revenue. It's not, you know, it's important. Pipeline impact, I think, is leveled out. We're not going to -- we don't have a huge amount of pipeline, but we do have some. It should have been up -- this is our -- this slides out of order, I don't know how it got here. It should have been up higher, but this is our property values over time. And I just want to emphasize here, the orange is residential, right? So if I focus, overly focus on residential is because overwhelmingly, that's the most important piece. So you can see, we're excessive a billion dollars, and that's just going to continue to grow. All right. So public utility, natural gas pipeline, electrical infrastructure, those are the true drivers. The pipe, I'm assuming we're going to get the pipeline assessment settled. We have, there is an agreement out there, Lorain County is kind of holding that up. They're the only county that's not signed off on that. And essentially, going forward, I expect the pipeline, not the pipeline, the public utilities, the valuations, depreciation offset each other. So I don't expect to see any big growth in this. It's just going to be kind of, yeah, assets are going to go up in value, but utility companies are going to depreciate it as much as they can. Obviously, like anyone else, they want to minimize their tax liability. Income tax. This is obviously becoming more and more of a big deal for us. It's a half percent, and you can see the growth over time with our income tax. Income tax has the benefit of benefiting from strong economy, and it can go up naturally, unlike our property tax. Right now, I'm -- economic growth is driving this, and wage growth in the school district. This year, I have four, I had assumed a 4% increase with 3.1% for the years beyond. And our historical increase has been 4.4, so this is probably maybe a little bit low. Particularly, this year, we're seeing, so far, we're seeing much higher than 4% increase in the collections on income tax. So, again, this is probably a little bit conservative at this point. Our next big area is, okay, state aid, unrestricted grants and aid, I want to spend some time on this. The big dip you see is really impact of some, the formula changes, then it levels out. And I also want to point out, one of the things is that, is that because of the way the restricted grants are done are differently, different, it's hard to compare prior to the Fair School Funding Plan before, because it's a different model. But again, we're not expecting, and I've said this before, the state's not help, is not going to help us. I don't think we should expect the state to do much. If we can get the Fair Funding Formula fully implemented, it does help us, but we're still a high-wealth district, right? So at least, the major benefit for us is that the Fair School Funding Formula is just that, it'll be predictable. We can figure out what we're going to get every year, rather than, you know, be at the whim of the current legislature. So that's our hope going forward. So let's talk about this. So the key pieces in the Fair Funding Formula, remember, it's base costs, and then what is your share of those base costs, right? Based on wealth. So the first big assumption here is our enrollment. And now, yeah, we've kind of cautioned people to, you'll see two different types of enrollment numbers. You'll see the state enrollment numbers that we get funded off, then you'll see our butts-in-seat enrollment numbers that we use for capacity of the buildings. Those two numbers don't match because of things we've talked about before. Now, the trend is the same, they're just the, so they're relatively the same, it's just that the difference between, you know, full-day, half-day kindergarten, career tech classes in the high school, those kinds of things make those numbers. But you can see the growth that I've got forecasted in here. So our student growth's going up, which would help us against the formula, but our federal-adjusted income is going up, and of course, property value is going up. And remember, the key pieces of your local share is, you take the number of students you have, and essentially divide it by an index that includes property tax wealth, property wealth, federal-adjusted gross income, and state median income. Those three things divided in there give you your wealth. Well, we've got increasing property values, we are higher than state average on state median income and higher than federal, so we're going to be, going forward, continued, you know, continue to be where we are wealth-wise. The only question is, does our growth, student growth, outpace our valuations or not? That'll dictate how much aid we get, because it really is a per-student calculation. So again, I'm going to, the key assumption here on the restricted, on the state aid is our student growth. So if this number is going to impact more than anything else I put in here. So I have, in my key assumptions, about 100 students a year. It may be like 98, 90, but it's a little less than 2% or a little bit less growth per year, and that our growth can outpace our valuation growth, but no significant changes in categoricals. That means some things like special education, gifted, career tech, that those numbers as a percentage remain about the same. And I'm assuming that the Fair Funding Formula remains in place. Now, the one assumption I've made, and Tom might want to weigh in on this, is that we are funded, right now, the implementation of the Fair Funding Plan is 33%. And I'm assuming, I'm locking that in, assuming that going forward, next year, it's supposed to go up to 50, then 67, then 100. So at this point, I've locked in 33, not knowing what's going to happen with the state legislature. Now, in all fairness, if it goes ahead and gets implemented, it does mean a little bit more money to us, but like next year, it's like $50,000, and $100,000 next year. So it's not going to shift the curve at all. So that assumption is important, but it's not. If I'm wrong on it, it's a, you know, it's a fraction of a one, you know, percentage on the total impact. Oops. I gotta look at my slides, they kind of, they got weird. Okay, I gotta, I'll fix these slides. The next one is restricted grants and aid, and this is where you see the huge jump. And the huge jump is due for a number of reasons. The biggest one is student wellness dollars, which were outside of the formula, are now in the formula. So we get about $370,000 in student wellness money that has to be used for that. It's a restricted grant, and of course, we fortunately, we've had systems in place to use that. So essentially, Dr. Foltz's department, that's where that money is spent, in student wellness. The other areas, so the key drivers in the restricted side is enrollment, and then our big dollars come from student wellness. The second big area is catastrophic costs. That's for special education. So at the end of this year, we will file, if you will, a request for reimbursement from the state for last year's spending on catastrophic costs. And catastrophic costs, there's a benchmark per student, so any student, I'm going to round this number, let's say it's $30,000. Any cost over $30,000, we can apply to the state to get reimbursed for. And then we get reimbursed, we got like 27 cents on the dollar. So we get something back, but that's our second biggest in this restricted area. Gifted is the third. So we get almost $200,000 in gifted funding from this formula. So it does work. And then the last area is career tech, and that is number, and that's based on the number of students at the junior high in industrial arts, industrial tech, STEM and STEM at the high school. Those three generates money for career tech spending. That career tech spending cannot be spent on people, though. It can only be spent on supplies and equipment. So we pay for the staff out of general fund, and then most of their supplies and stuff come from these career tech dollars. And so I'm key in, really no major shifts in those categoricals. Our percentage of gifted students will stay about the same. Our percentage of special needs students will stay about the same, that kind of thing. All right. Property tax allocation, this is money, it's one of those, it comes from the state, but it really is almost considered local. And here's what happens, most of us, if you live in your house, you've applied for your 2.5% discount on your property tax. The state makes that up. So on your property tax bill, if you've got that 2.5% discount, it comes off your bill, but the state covers it back to us to keep it whole. So if you're in the senior living, and you get the 10% discount, all those things come back this way. So this is just a, this is just a function of the discounts and coming back to us. So that could, it really is proportional to our tax payments, and over time, you'd expect that to go down, because the discounts will go down as, depending on your percentage of, you know, seniors and other discounts that we get on our property tax. So no major change is there. The percentage of senior property owners could change this. So if you see a demographic change, that could impact us either way. So if you see a demographic change, that could impact us either way. All right, all other operating, these are just to catch off for interest, tuition, you know, well, it's preschool, kindergarten, student fees, all those kinds of things. So, the biggest tuition, our tuition for preschool and kindergarten are the biggest thing. Our investments this year has become significant, and everything else is kinda miscellaneous. And I'm assuming that our, our registration for kindergarten preschool will remain steady, but interest, our interest income going forward, after this year, it's wonderful right now, but I expect at some point in time, interest rates will, will come back, come back down once inflation gets back under control, the Fed will start dropping interest rates again. So another year, so I expect to see interest rates to start falling. We've probably got another good year, for those who are investing, it's a good thing. As long as we're not borrowing, we're okay. So that's the revenue side. Expenditure side. You can see, you know, the rise in expenses and salaries, we'll see, is the, is the biggest, is the biggest driver on this. So start with personnel services, this is, this is salaries. The biggest driver is certified staff. We've got built in approximately, this is approximately about $850,000 to $1 million a year built in for more certified staff, that corresponds to enrollment. Because you think about it, if you had 100 students, you keep the 25 to 1 student ratio, that's for classroom teachers, and probably you'd need at least one intervention specialist, just based on our current, current ratios, let alone if you have other, other needs in there. So that's, that's the biggest driver, obviously, things like our cost, our base increases for cost of living are in there, as well as for, our certified staff is the biggest group, but classified also step increases, just for longevity. It's all built into those annual increases. We're seeing a little bit increase in expenses, and, you know, Don's trying to get, hire particularly classified staff, we have some incentives, and we have increased substitute rates, try to bring, bring people in. So, the key assumption here is 8 to 10 certified staff a year. Obviously, if enrollment flattens out and changes, that changes that assumption, but that assumption's just based on, based on enrollment. I will say that the conversation's gonna be, is when our ESR money runs out, what do we do with those programs? And that's a conversation that, and Tom and I've talked, and talked to exec team, in my mind, when we get to that point, that's gotta be built in those 8 to 10. It's not additional, those 8 and 10. So, if we wanna keep something going, you've gotta give up something here, over here. So, we can't fund all of that. And even as you can see, based on the challenges, 8 to 10 staff members a year on growth, means we've gotta do something, you know, renew levy, or additional, you know, replacement levy, that kinda thing. So, so we're very keen, of all these programs we've added, that require personnel, that there's a day of reckoning, that's gotta be balanced with what we're, what's going on. So, it's, it's, it's something we get, we're gonna keep that conversation in the forefront on it. So, benefits, so expenses are, salaries are 60% of our total expenses, so people. And, and we talked about last month, that the bulk of that is certified classroom direct, you know, so benefits, they follow, they're gonna follow salaries. And the biggest driver is insurance. Health insurance is, you know, is over half of our benefit costs. We're doing some things internally to try to minimize that, we're self-insured, so essentially, we're our own insurance company. We do buy stop-loss insurance to help with high, high-dollar claims, but essentially is, when I go to the doctor, it's not some insurance company paying for that, Perry's work school's paying for it, right? It's just, it's the way of nature. So we're doing some things, we're changing our, our prescription management company, looks like it'll save us some significant dollars, and that's, that's, that's the biggest piece of it. The second biggest piece is retirement benefits. If you haven't seen the news lately, STRS is asking the legislature to increase the employer contribution another 1%. That would be very, that's a very significant cost to us. So instead of four, so for every dollar of certified staff, we have, we pay, you know, it's 14% towards our retirement, this would go up to 15. Now, don't know if it'll go or not, but it's, 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 it's out there, something we gotta, and that's not built into the forecast at this point. So my key assumptions is, our premium increase for health insurance will stay, at national averages, we've done a good job up to this point, and that we're gonna have no major changes in our benefit offering, so we're just holding our own here on the, on the insurance side. That's, that's the big one at this point. And we're, we have not, we don't know what our new rate for, our insurance rates are on a calendar year, so we're working on our new rate for, for next calendar year, we don't know what that number is yet. It should be, we should be good, we've done a pretty good job on that. Stop-loss is the biggest issue, we've had some high claimants, so our stopgap, stop-loss insurance has gone up. And that's, that's, so, and we are looking at other options. Nice thing about being self-insured, we have control, we're not at the mercy of other people's decision-making, but then again, our pool of insurance is, our, you know, our thousands of, you know, employees, I'm rounding that number up, that pool, where if you went to a consortium, you'd have a bigger pool to share that, but you also gotta share the decision-making, which is why we're not in a consortium today, because of some, you know, wise moves to get out of a consortium that was not making good decisions. Purchase services, so salaries, benefits, purchase services are our next big one, we're seeing, you know, again, this continued growth. The biggest driver is special education, and that's completely driven by student needs. We are looking at, our paraprofessionals are paid, our, our purchase service, Sioux Wood County ESC, we're doing analysis to see if it makes, makes any sense to bring them in-house, to see if there's some savings. I don't know that there is, but we, we are looking at that, that's a big cost item, that's about, that is about half the special education costs are those paras. Technology demands, things like cybersecurity has become bigger and more costly. Mr. Schaefer, I discussed yesterday, we are dependent on a fiber connection from here to Archibald, that passes, you know, essentially, you know, through Springfield and heads west, that if that goes down, we're out of business. And it has gone down. So do we bring in a redundant connection from a different direction? So that, if something happens, we can keep, keep operating, we're so dependent on technology. And then utilities are, obviously, there are increases, we got some price, we're fixed on some prices, but not on others. So, I'm assuming our, special education demands are gonna increase, and we're gonna see inflationary increases in utility costs, and, and cybersecurity is gonna increase our, our technology demands. Go the other way. Okay, supplies and materials. You can, you can see the, the, the big jump, part of that was pent up, demand for COVID, we come back, our supply budgets in the buildings, the next big jump from 2022 to 2023, I'll talk about here, is driven completely by inflationary pressures. And with diesel fuel being the biggest one, our diesel fuel spending this year will be twice what it was last year.
Wow.
That's using less fuel, too. So it's not using more, it's just purely a price situation. So it is, it's kinda disheartening, but it is what it is. It's like talking to James and Courtney, how do you, what do we do about this? Well, we gotta transport the kids, we can't have them pushing the buses, we're using the propane buses to keep the cost down for the longer routes, and the propane is nice because we got fixed pricing on it, so over time, you know, that kinda thing helps, but that's, that's the biggest, the biggest driver. The second piece is, is this thing's a little, it's, it's not a huge dollar amount, but it's, it's symbolic of what's going on, it's things like paper costs. Last year at this time, we were spending about $25, $26 for a case of paper, we're purchasing bulk for district-wide, and our best pricing's over, is over $40.
Wow.
So, it's, so, so on that side of it, supply costs are a big deal. The second thing we're seeing is maintenance costs, and I talked with Jason Blumer and James Mapus, and they're, they're holding the district together with, with baling twine and zip ties, and unfortunately, James is managing the permanent improvement fund to try to get as much maintenance out of that, but the deferred maintenance on our buildings is catching up, that's the point. We got a boiler, we got a steam leak in this building, if you need a sauna, go down the old locker room, take your towel, and, and just try to keep the Band-Aid on things. And it's, it's not a, it's not a criticism, the maintenance department's just trying to keep things together on equipment that's probably well past its useful life. So, I'm assuming that obviously inflation's gonna maintain at its current levels for a while, and our maintenance costs are gonna continue to increase, until we address the deferred maintenance on these buildings, hopefully, which will be hopefully in this facilities project. Last one is, on here is capital. We don't spend a whole lot of capital out of general fund, and it's primarily for, we have a bus lease payment that comes out of capital, and we have some major expenses, but it's, it's really relatively a small amount compared to the budget. Almost all our capital spending comes out of our permanent improvement fund. And this last, intergovernment aid, that is a House Bill 264 project, that bond we're paying out of general fund, filing matures in 2028, so that goes away in six years, and that's, again, that, that was an energy conservation bond, and some, and I don't know what it was, what it was for, but it's almost, it's almost paid off, so. And the last one, other objects, that's just, most of that is counting treasure and auditor fees. The nice thing about, from a school district standpoint, really a taxpayer, not necessarily, is that increased revenue from tax base is good, but the auditor and the treasurer like it, too, because they get more money, because they get a percentage of it. So those fees go up with the amount of tax collection, that's how they, they fund their office, so. So the bottom line is, again, we're looking, you know, this year's looking good, next year's gonna start, start being a challenge, we are doing some things, you know, we're talking, constant exec team, where can we reduce costs, do we really need that person? Don is a really good gatekeeper in HR, on, just because you want it, doesn't mean you should, you need it, right? And there are some positions, do we really, that are not filled, do we really need to fill them? All those kinda questions we're asking to try to control, control costs, you know, even, you know, we got a new contract on our copiers that's saving us significant money, all those things are there, but it's, it's the personnel side is where the big dollars are, right? So that's where we gotta, we gotta keep our eye on that ball, and frankly, we're gonna have to, I won't say we're gonna have to, if we don't wanna fundamentally change the school district, you're gonna have to, we're gonna have to replace the levy of some sort. Because I don't know how you can remove $13 million of expenses without significantly impacting programming. But we, we'll have to look, we'll be looking at those kinds of things. So, conclusions, rough things up, look, we're healthy, you know, I don't get that excited five years out, because my crystal ball is really not that, it's good, but it's not that good. Enrollment growth is gonna be the key driver for a lot of this, and we gotta work on spending controls, and I think we are, working on it. State funding remains a concern, it's, it's not major, but it's significant. And the big thing, though, is looking past this forecast. The facilities groups is an important piece of that, because that's gonna dictate things like deferred maintenance on the buildings, it's gonna dictate what kinda potential future levies we need, where there's new buildings, and then, and all those things are tied together, they're not, you know, they're not standalone. And plus, you know, for example, with the facilities group, I'm working on a 10-year cash flow. So we can sit down, we start talking about levy, we're not looking about next five years, let's look at the next 10 years, what we think. Obviously, farther a go, it's, we, we don't know, but at least we gotta start looking that far out. I think that, because if not, we're gonna, our, the taxpayers are gonna get whiplash from all the, the asks, right? And I don't think we wanna be going back any more than we have to. So, and then, PI levy's gonna have to be addressed, that PI levy is, it's amazing foresight to have that passed when it was, and, but it, what it generates today, it generates the same amount of money it did, you know, 30 years, yeah, 30 years ago, the demands are much, are much greater, so. That's, that is, line by line, I try to go fast for you. So what questions do you have? Anything on the assumptions that you say are crazy?
No, I think it's, I don't know if it's because I've been on the board for a while, but it gets easier to understand these as time goes on, I think this was a great presentation, Randy, thank you.
I'll get some things cleaned up before the board, so at the board meeting, when we, I probably will not, I'm not going through this, I'll go through some changes that we make between now and then, so you know what, what the tweaks were, and of course, we'll review the bottom line again, so that you're on, on board. But, you know, we're looking good for this year, and next year, I think we can, we can address, it's, we get past, you know, obviously, the levy is probably my biggest concern at this point.
Yeah, I appreciate that you're conservative on your recommendations, when we take state funding into consideration, while they promise us things, we know that that doesn't always come through, so instead of, you know, they tell us 10%, and you can, you know, are conservative at 5. I appreciate that, and I appreciate all your detail explaining this. You know, it was a very thorough explanation for the five years, and I also appreciate that you talked about the facility master plan, and you guys are looking beyond five-year forecasts to see what's coming up.
Yeah, I'm a bit, these are integrated, and, and people don't always see it, but they, they've gotta be, the budget, the forecast, and what's going on. We're, we're, we're a big complicated district, which, which is what's excited about that. And the hard thing is, if you know how to communicate all this, right? Because there's a lot of pieces to this, and, and if you're not in the middle of it, sometimes I start wondering, you know, which way to go with, with it, so.
Well, when you look at 85%, 84% being personnel, that's our business, you know, people. So, that, that's pretty consistent year in, year out. The other thing is, you forecasting, you're much better than a weatherman, but I wouldn't wanna be in your position either, too many variables out there, to predict five years out, but deficit spending's always a word that's been used. It's not a bad thing, it happens, that's why you need the levies. The plan for the levy would be starting 24?
Well, that's, we need to have that conversation, right? But I think we have to have the facilities plan in place to make those strategic decisions. Like I said, you could put the levy on as early as next, a year from now, to have it, when one rolls off, it's, it's already there, and we don't have to sweat for a year, because if you wait till November 2024, we have to be on. If it doesn't pass, you're slashing and burning until you can get it back on, because, because remember, taxes always are in arrears, so you're always a year, you're, you're a year behind.
So I wanna say one to your question, I did not hear any assumptions kinda that jumped out at me, as a, that, that seems way off-base. I do believe there is a more detailed summary of the assumptions that you used, that I would encourage the board members, if you have not already, to take a look at that, because this is all based, this is only as good as the assumptions that are out there. So that's probably where I'm gonna focus my efforts, is take another look at the assumptions between now and the next board meeting. You know, I appreciate, I believe this is the first time, since I've been on the board, we've kinda done it this way, where we've taken this process outside of the purview of the finance committee, and really presented it to all the board members in this much detail, with enough time to react to it, too. It's usually done on a couple finance committee meetings, and then it, then it pops up at a board meeting, and we vote on it, so. I think this, this process, doing it this way, this, this new way was, is really good for us, is really good for the community to bring transparency out there, on what the next five years is gonna look like. Because as, as you'd said, I think we just saw the roadmap to the work that is certainly ahead of this board in the next year. As you'd mentioned, the facilities, the facility planning work, the strategy work that we're gonna be kicking off here, all comes into how does this community wanna educate? gonna be kicking off here, all comes into how does this community want to educate our children in the future, and how do we want to support those people that will be doing that education in the future? So it's a little scary, but it's, it's what we signed up to do. It's time for these serious conversations over the next year. I mean, this is where we get into kind of the, the grind and the meat of what the future of Perrysburg Schools is gonna look like, so.
And I would emphasize one thing, my, my hope is that when, when the board approves the five-year forecast, that you recognize it's our forecast. It's Perrysburg exempted village school district forecast, it's not Randy Drew's forecast.
Well done. If there aren't any other questions, we'll move on, but we will talk about the-
There'll be, what, again, in the spring, this will be done again.
Yeah, yeah. So we will talk about it again in the finance committee meeting, and then see it one more time in the next board meeting. Okay?
And by the way, there, there are typos in the narrative. Dr. Reford hopefully found all of them, I will fix them before the final presentation.
You're a numbers guy. That's-
Excel doesn't have, and like you said, and I know that, Excel doesn't have spell check, so that just jumps out at me. You know, I wouldn't, you know, that's just, the English teacher-
You mean Sue didn't catch that one?
Well, I kind of figured that it was, this was a rough draft, so.
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Drew. Well done. Next item is our consent agenda. So do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Dr. Reford?
Second.
Ms. Laramo?
And roll call, please.
Dr. Reford?
Yes.
Ms. Laramo?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes. I apologize, we did that without discussion, but, okay.
I believe that carries us through then to item seven, board discussion.
I do have one thing, and I'm not sure if this is for Randy or for Tom. As we wrap up the calendar year and my first year on the board, I was wondering if we could get for the board, who, like what committees we have, who, what board members are on those committees, and attendance for each of those, just so we can, if we need to reconstitute when we come up to January, to see who, you know, are, not that all of the board committees are important, but like having operations and finance, and if we need to switch some things around based on calendars and what people can, can do. I don't know if you're able to provide that, and it doesn't have to be right now, but just get us some information, so we can see.
Absolutely.
You know, I know I flaked on one, because it wasn't on my calendar, and I didn't have the Perrysburg one merged, but, you know, I just, as we move into the new year, I know we've talked about maybe switching some things around, or looking to see who's a better fit in different areas. I'd appreciate that, please. Thank you.
That point, that point's well taken, and you were right, we're two, three months away from the organizational meeting, where-
It's November 1st.
I've, I've got as, as, you know, finishing up my year in here, I could have thoughts on talking about our committee structures, too. Is it working for us? Is it working for the district? So yeah, I can see where that would be useful information. We'll be talking about times of even say this meeting, I know there's been talk about, should we move the time of this meeting? Is that working for everybody? So, yeah, hard to believe that we're almost through the year, and it's time to start looking to 2023.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Hearing none, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Dr. Reford?
Ms. Laramo? And roll call, please.
Dr. Reford?
Yes.
Ms. Laramo?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you.
One hour even with that report.